Received one request to address council after the deadline. Will be heard under new business. First resident, Tom Robertson.
Mr. Robertson, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, you have some literature in front of you, and this is kind of more on a positive note rather than a negative note. I asked the city for some information concerning the new council people I want to explain. Currently, we pay a fee to the FAA or to the airport. Funds are transferred so the public's training center can set out there on that field. And there's been a lot of developments over this action over the years. So I wanted to look and see what the parameters were for really charging that fee. I went back to the calculations provided to me, and right now, we're paying approximately $5,500 per acre per year for that field for that training center to set on. As you can see in the chart that I provided everybody, by 2029, we're getting close to $7,000 an acre. If this property was on range line, I could understand, but where it's at, where it can't be developed, that seems very excessive. I don't know how that appraisal ever came to be. But it also says in there that if something directly benefits the airport, you can waive a fair market value appraisal. And I would say that the fire department and the police department directly benefit the airport because, as you know, there's one gentleman out there, one person, if there's an airline crash, and then the other stations respond. Without that, the airport would be, could not be operating. If you did not have the Joplin Fire Department to respond, that airport could not operate. So it is a direct benefit, which means we could ask the FAA to waive those fees, move that almost $100,000 back out, go into the airport, and move it back into public safety. And I know this may be $100,000. It'd pay for one police officer, one firefighter, but really, all it takes is a letter to the FAA. There's an expansive amount on their website you could look at, and it would take the mayor or the city manager to write that letter and just see if we get it waived. It also has about waiving if the minimal revenue, if you want to go on minimal revenue. Well, right now, I think around bail's bringing about $100, and I would say we could probably 16 acres, you know, maybe get 12 rolls off of that, but it's not $93,000 a year. So all I'm asking is if the council, whoever could draft a letter with the parameters and explain that we're in a crisis with police and fire, and it's dangerous, I really believe the FAA would respond to us in a kindly manner. But on their premise where they say directly benefits, understand that Joplin Airport could not land commercial aircraft without the fire department. So it is a direct benefit. This wouldn't cost anything. We wouldn't have to have a study. It's just a simple letter, and the benefit is not only the $100,000, but citizens could see you guys has watching the taxpayers' dollar, and it would be a positive for you guys. So I thought if you could do that and relay that, if you are able to get that waived, $100,000 brings on a new police officer, you could tell that to the public, and that'd be positive for us. So if you have any questions about that form, also, the little short form I gave you with the color, the yellow on it, there's a massive, a lot more information on that. So, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Ditar.
Hey, Tom. Thanks for that information. I think it's great the way you presented. It's helpful. My question to you is what, what's the website? Just the FFA, FAA website?
Yes, and I think it's Regional Office.
Is that down here on that?
It may be on there. I went in and looked it up, but I'm not exactly sure. I'm sure you could find it or just contact the Regional Office for their parameters on that.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I just thought it'd be a very positive thing for the city.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditar. Ms. Spencer.
I just want to clarify. The waiver, is it just for a year? Do you have to keep doing it, or do you know the details?
Now, that I don't know. It's, the way I read it, and of course, you'd have to ask the city attorney, the way I read it, once you deem that the fire department directly benefits it, the fire department's not going away, and then you're free of doing that every year, but, you know, but like I said, the most important thing to the FAA is how can they say the fire department doesn't directly benefit it because they couldn't have commercial flights? I, it's, you know, it's a short letter, and we might save $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Next citizen, please.
Brian Evans.
Welcome, Mr. Evans. You have five minutes.
I was going to say I can also send you that, an email with that link. I have it as well. I put some information out on the FAA, what Mr. Robertson was talking about. It gives you all the different requirements of what they would like, and it'll tell you a bit more about it. So that pays two more officers, so that's important. Also, I wanted to thank Mr. Cortez. He told me before to go through the budget. I've gone, it's been my summer, I've gone through the last years of budgets, got tons of data that I've gotten, so I wanted to thank you for recommending that. I'm tired, I'm ready to go back to work. So, teaching, it's easier. I know that this council and others within this government have been frustrated with my push for public safety. And one thing I would also like to point out is I hear over and over, public safety, I really don't like the term used, public safety, because public safety can encompass a lot of things. I prefer everything to be pointed towards police and fire when it comes to funding. We can't look at the failures of the past and let it deter us from our future efforts of success, but what we should use those failures for is help us to make sure we don't repeat those past mistakes and be able to fix the mistakes that we've made. One of the concerns that a lot of citizens have expressed to me is we need, they want us to make hard choices, trim our expenditures, stop our addiction to federal tax dollars, and trim the fat from our city. It's not easy to do, but it's something we need to work towards. In fact, I've, as I pointed out before, I wanted to thank you for moving towards an audit. We definitely need it, only we need to make sure that it's an audit that's not done, connected to the city in any way, and a forensic would be the best. I've been talking to a lot of people, talking to accountants on some of the information I've been going through the budget, had people help me try to dig up some, some of the numbers and meet what they mean. And we need to make sure, this is what private companies do, and this is what we need to make sure we do to ensure, back when I used to manage a corporate restaurant, we had to dig through, have audits, and make sure that we were doing things correctly, and we learned a lot. We made mistakes, not necessarily intentionally, but we ended up saving sometimes millions of dollars. Then we can use the audit to hit target areas that we need to, to streamline in our city and reduce taxpayer-funded government waste, which I can tell you I've been finding a lot I'd love to go over with you. In addition, we should also try to set up priorities. I know in the past, I've talked to several people, priority-based budgeting, we tried it in the past with, I believe, Sam Anslem was the city manager at the time, totally messed it up big time because he didn't do it the way it was supposed to be. As I understand it, they put public, everything under public safety, and it did a great thing for our streetlights and all kinds of other things, and our police and fire kind of got the shaft. That cannot happen anymore. We need to trim down and cut our services with priority-based, digging into, basically, we need to bring in citizens to get their input, put it all together, figure out priorities from top to bottom. There's been a number of cities that I've been in contact with. I've been talking to six different cities from all over the United States, Rapid City, South Dakota, Duluth, Minnesota, Branson, Missouri, all who had issues similar to this, and they ended up getting together, figuring out what is, what do the citizens need the most, and what do the citizens care about the least? And they started trimming the, each different category at the bottom and moving that money up to the top of each category. We've got to find ways to fix our police and fire issues, and it needs to be police and fire, not just public safety. We can look at options that benefit the community, the airport, like I was talking about, there's that. There is also the airport, I know a lot of people don't want to look at different options like public-private partnerships, which is not necessarily privatizing, but it's basically a partnership between the two, saves money and actually streamlines everything, saves the taxpayer, and you still have your airport. And we know private industry runs things a whole lot better than government ever can. We also have a lot of priorities that, we built a lot of parks that we can't maintain because we have so many, we have a lot of trails that are not interconnected, that we spend a ton of money on, and we can't even police them because we don't have enough police to deal with it. We need to fix those things. But if we don't get busy on these and figure out these cost savings procedures, we need to do it immediately. If we don't, our city's going to be in a lot of trouble, and we need to get back our residents' trust. I went around talking to a lot of people over the last few months, and people don't trust government, from top to bottom, federal to local, so we've got to get that back.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Mayor.
Mr. Shaw.
Can I make a comment real quick, please? We have, one of the things that he brought up, one of the things that our city manager brought up was addition audit, additional audit and so forth. One of the things that Brian brought out is the fact we need to have one not connected with the city. How do you have an audit and not be connected with the city? They're going to come in to connect the city books and so forth. I, I'm not saying that this council decides they want to have an audit, that, you know, I'm just one member, and I'm not saying that I'm dead set against it, but if we're talking about cutting fat and cutting spaces, $90,000 we'd be spending for another audit that we already paying somebody, and that firm that's doing our audit, just because they've done it for several years, doesn't mean that they're wrong. They have a reputation that they have to keep, they have our laws and things that, that they have to answer to on the national level. So I'm thinking, you know, let's give it a little bit of thought before we just lash out and say, oh, that's what we need. But anyway, just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mr. Evans. Couple of things you said I just wanted to respond to. First of all, I, for one, as a council member, am not frustrated with your fervor of what you've done over the last couple of years. A lot more citizens should be as engaged as you are, so I'm not frustrated. You bring good things to us at times, and there are times when we don't agree with things, but that, that's just, of course, I do it business. I do appreciate you recognizing that what is in front of us and what we have to do as far as trimming the fat, it's not an easy thing. So I appreciate you saying that and, and realizing that what we do have in front of us is trying to resolve our public safety needs, our police and fire needs, is, is not an easy thing that's in front of us, but I think we're all signed up and ready to go to try to figure out what we can do. You did make one comment, though, that, that I was just, just curious as to, you said, cutting services. And if, if you could just give me a couple of examples of what you think that would be, I'm sure you have an exhaustive list. You've done your homework this summer. I appreciate that. But if you could give me a couple just off the top of your head of what services you think the city's providing at this time that would be something feasible for us to cut and save money on going forward into the future?
I can get back to you on that. I know I've been emailing you guys a lot the last three weeks. On that, I know we did the city manager's listening tour, I know there's a lot of, basically, it wouldn't be what I would think that we should cut. I think it's what the citizens, like on the city manager's listening tour, one of the things they did was they said, these are our priorities. A lot of times, what comes back is you have, like the company we hired the other day, the ARPA funds we talked a little bit about, police and fire weren't at the top of the list. That was, that was a huge red flag because the people at Joplin on the listening tour, that was their, their top priority. That was what they wanted the most. And the things at the bottom is what I'm talking about on, for example, that listening tour. Those are things that we're going to have to sit down and figure out, how can we, do we have to cut a service? Do we have to cut back on a service? We have to find the money somewhere. We just can't pull it out of thin air. We're not the federal government, we can't print it and make our inflation skyrocket, but we've got to, you know, do something.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you, Mayor.
What else? Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
It is requested that persons wishing to testify before the city address public safety needs.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Nick Edwards, city manager. Want to discuss with you all, plan to address public safety needs. As you know, the city recently was out for an election called Proposition Public Safety to help boost, provide funding for our public safety groups. With that not being successful, we need to continue work or have a plan to how to address those issues that we were working towards. Let me see. Put this on here. You all are really familiar with this, but I'll be brief because I know there's probably some folks that are watching at home. Earlier, or last year, we did two resource allocation studies for our police and our fire departments. Those were independent looks at the needs that we have for public safety. They had a lot of different recommendations in the fire department. There was looking at, you know, of course, a new station, additional staffing, some agreements between agencies, fire marshal, just list out a lot of different things for us that we need to work towards. The police resource allocation study, again, there was a number of recommendations to look at, beat design, different shifts, and also, a big one was staffing. So I'd like to continue to work towards those. Those are things that I think would dramatically improve our community. The other item to work on is compensation. There's been, in the, just the last two years, some really significant changes in public sector competition or compensation that's making, making it hard to keep up with different pay changes that are happening. And then the last one is improving workload. There's a significant need to address staffing and improve our level of service by adding more officers and firefighters. I want to share with you all just, just an excerpt out of the MML, which is Missouri Municipal League Wage Study. It's not a true study as it doesn't compare different steps and a lot of different things, but it does at least provide from across the state some minimum pay amounts and maximum pay amounts. And so it's a, it's an easy way to look to see kind of where different pay is, is at in the state. So I've done the top 35, that's what happened to be able to fit on this slide. Not every city has participated in this survey. There's, Kansas City's not on this, Springfield, Columbia, we're missing some county information, so it's not a complete sample, but you can kind of get to see, at least for a police officer, generally where those pay levels are at. You see in the St. Louis area, you know, there's, the minimum pay is starting to be around that $60,000 mark, and that's probably the top at the state, but then, you know, you, you can start to see other, other pay amounts in there as well. Joplin ranked out of the participating cities number 69. One of the other things to talk about is pay for our leadership positions. One of the things I think we struggle with as an organization is providing enough pay differences between ranks. Oftentimes, the, there's not really a greater incentive to promote, and what that does is that, that hurts leadership in our key, our key ranks. So I'm just providing some pay information for police chiefs across the state. You can kind of see, again, their mens and their maxes. So when we talk about improving workload, the resource allocation study recommended hiring 22 additional officers, which we believe to cost around $2.2 million with benefits and, and some equipment. The fire department resource allocation study recommended adding a centrally located station and staffing, which would be an additional 15 firefighters at 1.7 million. That doesn't include the cost of the station itself. There's also adding additional firefighters for Station 6, and so there's a need to add additional firefighters. So the question is, with Proposition Public Safety not, not being successful, how can we address these needs? If this is where we need to go, or these are the things that we need to achieve, how can we get there? For me, it really starts with listening to the voters. I think we have to respect what they said and work through the concerns that they brought forward to us when we were kind of sharing the information about Proposition Public Safety. There's, I put three, three concerns that I heard probably the most. There's variations of these. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are things that certainly heard a lot about. So one, I think there's a, there's, the public thinks we misuse our existing resources. I heard a lot of questions about why would this city do sidewalks instead of police officers or, you know, variations of that question, something to get into. There was a lot of mistrust of the city, you know, past decisions that have, that maybe didn't work out, that leaves the voters thinking that there's, that the city can't be trusted. I heard the Wallace Pajoli thing come up during this, during Proposition Public Safety. That's just one example. And then a third one was negative economic conditions, bad timing. I know a lot of folks are hurting, and the tax would have been really hard to bear. The magnitude of it was significant, and so there were some concerns about that. So diving into the concerns about the misuse of resources, I think one of the things that was eye-opening to me was the level of understanding that the community has on the city's budget. We share information publicly, we, we have meetings, we'll go through a PowerPoint tonight, but that's not, that's not reaching our community, and there's still that gap of understanding how the city's budget operates, operates. And so one of the things I would commit to is looking to do more budget workshops. Thankfully, when we were doing Proposition Public Safety, we got a lot of engagement about that tax and what we were trying to work towards, and so I'm hoping if we can plan some budget workshops, we can have a better, more honest conversation about what, what is involved with the city's budget. Complete the benchmark and level of service study, which is anticipate having sometime in November and December, for comments about just, you know, the city should just cut, cut the budget and move things around, which is not always something that we can do. Certainly, we can save money on maybe some paper clips here and there and some supplies, but to pull or to find the resources that we were trying to find, $9 million worth of new revenue or new resources to fund towards public safety, that's going to take significant effort. That's going to take right sizing the organization and looking at all the services we provide, determining if those services are meeting the expectations of the community, and if not, looking to see if we can do those in better ways. That is, those are big conversations and conversations that'll take a lot of discussion on, on how to implement. The third, or the third one is seek a town hall events facilitated by the Missouri Municipal League. The Missouri Municipal League is a consortium of cities that work together on, with the state and with representatives that advance local government issues, city issues. And so one of the things I think that might help is hosting a town hall event where they could come facilitate discussion about how municipal revenues work, their constraints, what cities are bound by. Having that kind of third-party independent view of how local government financing works, I think would be a real benefit for the community. And the last thing is to talk about improved, improved communication and council bills about spending and funding. You all are presented with contracts, you know, some of them are large, some of them are small. You probably don't do a good job of talking about where the funds come from and what they're, what the funding is designed to do. And so I think if we work, do a better job about improving that communication, it might clear up some confusion. The, the second thing is concerns about the mistrust of government. Again, during Proposition Public Safety, you were hit with a number of, of things about, you know, why the citizens maybe don't trust the city. And so I think one of the things that we can do to work on regaining that trust is to reconstitute the finance committee and ask for a recommendation on public, Proposition Public Safety. Have them go through kind of the analysis that led up to that and see if they agree. The finance committee, it's got a lot of great, a lot of great community leaders on that group that have significant financial backgrounds, you know, CPAs, accountants, CFOs, they understand large organizations, they understand some of the complexities that we have. And so building out that committee, maybe with some others that are interested, that maybe don't have that understanding, I think working together to look at the city's finances and getting a different assessment might help. The other thing that I would suggest that we do, it's not something popular for me to recommend, but happy to do it if it builds trust with the community, is to conduct a financial audit from a different consultant. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about where city dollars are being spent or how those are being safeguarded, and if that takes an independent audit to verify that, that be happy to work on bringing on an auditor that's different from our current auditor, just to have an added check to look at that. The city's done numerous audits over the years, so we do one every year. With grant funding, we get audited. Audits are, are a good check for us and would be happy to do one to build that trust. The other thing we could do is improve our city website to share key financial information about our audit, about audit and budget and other, other financial documents. If you look on the city's website, there should be a main thing on the, on the main page where you can go and find some of this information already. But we need to make that more accessible. There's nothing to hide. These are documents that are important to us, and so it's something that can be shared, and hopefully, that can generate a dialogue and maybe clear up any confusion that's out there. Last thing would be to create a financial dash, dashboard to improve transparency of our revenues and expenditures. The, Leslie will come forward, as she did tonight, to tell you about the sales tax trend. We can continue to do that, but maybe build it out to talk about the other revenue that the city uses, the expenditures that we're facing, and the other trends, so that there's a truer picture of, of how, how constrained our budget really is. Last thing is concerns about the timing and the magnitude. In the lead-up to Proposition, Proposition Public Safety, there was a discussion about, you know, sales tax or a property tax or other taxes. One of the things that is, is I've learned since the election is we need all the tools in our toolbox, and rather than wait until we absolutely need them, we probably need to make sure those tools are available to us at any time. And so I think if supported by the mayor and council, I think we should start working with our area legislators to make sure that we have those tools in our toolbox, maybe looking at the caps that Joplin has on our current, our current tax revenues or the different types, like maybe an income tax or something, but certainly don't want to be in the position, again, where we're really trying to do something big and significant, and we don't have the right tools to, in our toolbox. And then I think working through the steps I've talked about in regards to the misuse of funds and the mistrust of local government, working through those steps, I think would give us a strong case to go back to the public and talk about future financial needs that we might have. I'm suggesting that we reassess after going through these steps, reassess where we're at in May, if we haven't fully solved those needs, and there is a need to go back to the public. We can communicate that in response to the last election, Proposition Public Safety, you told us, you told us that there wasn't, that there was some concerns about the misuse of dollars and the mistrust. These are the things that we did in direct response to those concerns and be in a better position to ask for support. And so, moving forward, Mayor, if this is a plan that you all agree with, I would be happy to work with staff and start on these issues. Between now and then, we'll continue to work with our, our staff to work on internal equity adjustments, which is just another way of figuring out what we can do as far as compensation improvements for FY '23. Obviously, we're in the middle of the FY '23 budget process, and so I would encourage everybody that's listening to really pour some time and And so I would encourage everybody that's listening to really pour some time and energy into our budget process. There's information that the public needs to know about our resources. And best time to find out about that is through the budget process. So with that, Mayor, if there's no feedback, I'll be happy to work on the process that's been outlined, and we can move forward.
Counsel? Ms. Spencer?
Thank you. Let me start with the positive. I appreciate that after the process of trying to get Proposition Public Safety passed and with as many citizens voicing their opinions, that you broke it down and made an effort to show people that you did listen, that you did hear them. I think they probably felt for a long time that they weren't heard. So thank you for that. I think that's good. The only thing, and you probably know it's coming, the only thing I'm going to bring up again is my disappointment in the next steps as far as implementing the internal equity adjustments. Because if you're going to listen to the voters, one of the things that they said was going back to Proposition B, they were upset about across-the-board raises. So if you're going to say that you listened to the voters, that's one of the concerns they had, why they didn't want to pass Proposition Public Safety, which leads to the mistrust and so forth. So I'm just, again, going to express my disappointment, if that's the way we go, or if that's what you put forward, to do raises not necessarily across the board, but for the city employees and for police and fire. Because I just, the situation we're in with public safety, you can't compare that to the city employees. And that's not to diminish what the city employees do for us. We wouldn't be able to function without many of them. But the situation, especially with the police, is, I mean, they're at a breaking point, you know? And I also wholeheartedly feel that by doing that, if you did the city employee raises and the police and fire raises, that you would not only drive a bigger wedge in between the citizens and us, but also between the police and the fire and us. Because they don't want to see across-the-board raises either, city employees and police and fire. So I'm just, you know, you and I have had numerous conversations about it. So I just, maybe the unpopular, maybe the unpopular one up here by saying that, but that's just, I want to throw that out there again, that I'm not for anything other than police and fire right now. But thank you for the time and putting all this together for us.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Ms. Spencer, where are you seeing that we're doing across-the-board raises?
I didn't mean that across-the-board raises. When you, the equity study, so the raises for the specific employees that we talked about from the areas of stormwater tax and the other taxes, remember, on the equity study? So not across-the-board raises, but to the citizens, you know, they view across-the-board raises with police and fire with Prop B and felt deceived. So I'm just saying, from their mindset, if we would go forward and say, hey, this tax failed, but here we're going to give these city employees raises, and we're also going to give police and fire this amount of money. I just think the perception is going to be, again, does that make sense?
It does. I'd ask that we not jump to those conclusions. We're having great conversation, had another meeting today with the leadership from the Fraternal Order of Police. I've got a meeting later this week with international firefighters. It's all positive, trying to figure out how we can make the most improvement. And so I'm optimistic that we'll be able to do something good. It's obviously not going to be as great as Proposition Public Safety. And there's still going to be considerable, a very considerable gap between where we can go and where we need to be. If you look on that sampling of police officers, again, it's, you know, $60,000 for a police officer in St. Louis. And it would be easy to say, well, Joplin's not St. Louis, and that's right. And there's some, a lot of positives about being in Joplin. But I do think that that shows a trend. It shows an arc of thing, of a level of pay that we need to work towards. Proposition Public Safety came in at, who would start an officer around $47,000. So there was still going to be room to go. So, you know, we won't be able to get there until we work through those, that process that I've outlined and reassess where we are in May. And if there's support from the council, we can look at going for additional resources at that time.
Mr. Stenett?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, I'm glad you've put together what you've put together. I, at this point in time, you're still in discussion about what you may or may not be able to do as we move to this budget. And obviously, we need to give you that latitude and that time to work that out whenever you can. I think most everything you've said in here are basic things that at least I heard. I assume all the other councilmen heard as we went through the election process. I'm anxious to get through the budget and then to allow the council to roll up their sleeves and work with you as you work with your own staff to iron through some of these things. There are several things in here that are outlined that I believe the council needs to get their feet in the pond, so to speak, and work with you on determining, within that particular category, what we believe the citizens are telling us about what they would like to see happen in that area. So I hope that you, and Mr. Mayor, I hope that you will insist that the council is involved as we move through those discussions. But based on the election, I think that you're moving in the only direction you have available to you at this point in time. And obviously, as Mrs. Spencer said, addressing the public safety is probably an ultimate issue at this point in time. But all of these things are important, not just for this day and time, but for the future of the city of Joplin. We cannot keep throwing things back to the citizens until we resolve some of these issues and build some trust back. I have no problem standing up and telling anybody that I don't believe we've ever misused funds in the 20 years I've been around here. And I'm sure Mr. Shaw would probably echo that. But we've done a terrible job in communicating to the citizens, and you and I have had that discussion. So I'm looking forward to getting the budget out of the way so we can move forward and try to accomplish something positive. But I believe you're taking the proper steps to get that done, and I commend you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Koppel?
Great, glad you guys can hear me. Mr. City Manager, I think we have three timelines that have to be addressed. We have immediate actions that are going to need to be taken to try to slow down the bleeding that we currently have going on right now. We have some short-term fixes that are potentially going to be available to us. But I think that the steps and the actions that you outlined and addressed to us are going to absolutely be necessary for us to look at long-term solutions to long-term problems. The immediate and the short term is going to help address the officer shortages we have now, but that does nothing to do anything about the officer shortages. We have the next 22 officers we need, the next 15 firefighters we need. And those are going to take long-term solutions, and that's going to be a work in progress. So I think that we're going to have to attack the problems before us in three phases, immediate, short-term, and long-term. And I agree, I applaud you on putting together this plan to start a long-term fix. So you absolutely have my support with moving forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Koppel. Anybody else? Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, I wanted to talk about the concerns about mistrust of government. You got a couple items on here that could seem like immediate issues that we could take care of right now, especially improve city website to share key financial information and create a financial dashboard to improve transparency of the revenue and the expenditures. In your opinion, is this something that we could get to work on immediately and maybe get up and going soon? So if a citizen did have a concern about something, they would have a point-and-click ability to them to be able to get answers to questions that they may have, rather than waiting for another council meeting to come around or a need to get with the clerk to make a recommendation to come speak to us about it or so on and so forth?
Good question, sir. The, certainly, on the financial dashboard, that'll be, have to be something that we can, that we grow into. We can probably create a series of charts and graphs on a month-to-month basis and upload those as images. But if you want a fancy, you know, dashboard where you can highlight and filter and sort and search, that's probably going to have to be a software of some sort. I think that's a fairly common thing that businesses, local governments have, business intelligence, that those add-ins are, I think, should be fairly cheap. But we'll have to grow into it and get our legs underneath us and start on that process. And so it might start off crude, but I think we can do a pretty good job of having interactive financials on our website.
Thank you. And if, it sounds like you're making a decision to conduct an additional financial audit. Do you have a timeframe on that, or have you researched what the cost of that might be?
Those are great questions. As far as timeframe, we'd look, obviously, we'd like to look to get all this work complete by May, to the extent that that's possible. So that would be the timeline to, I think, our current auditor. Wesley, do you remember that fee for them? Around a $90,000 expenditure to do audit. And so maybe for something that's limited in this scope, maybe that cost wouldn't be so great. But we'd look to do that if there's support from this group to move forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Finalization of consent agenda? Anyone on the council wish to speak to the consent agenda? Anyone on the council wish to speak to the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the consent agenda? Consider the consent agenda finalized? Reports and communications?
News from Public Information Officer Lynn Anstott. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Well, the city is looking for school crossing guards to work with the Joplin Police Department to help students cross the street safely at designated crosswalks. This part-time position works one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. If interested, people can apply at joplinmo.org/jobs, or they can come into City Hall and fill out an application with the Human Resources Department. They're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. The city's free tree limb drop-off has been a popular program, and now it's the source of another upcoming giveaway of free wood chips. Wood chips serve as a great mulch for trees and bushes, and the wood chips will be available from 8:30 to 2:00 on Friday, August 19th, and Saturday, August 20th, at 1702 North Shepherd Ecker, just off Bell Center Road, about a half a mile. The wood chips are self-serve, and citizens are encouraged to bring scoops or shovels, buckets, to help them load their wood chips. Please note, the wood chip site is the same as the monthly tree limb drop-off, and it's at the same time, so you can drop off your limbs, drop those off, and then you can pick up your wood chips to do your other gardening work. So it's very convenient. Wood chips are available on the, will be available on the third Friday and Saturday of September and October as a supply is available. For information about these, they can call our recycling center coordinator at 624-0820, extension 1501. The city's annual auction is coming up. It's set for Saturday, September 10th. The auction begins at 9:00 a.m. and will be held in the Street Maintenance Barn, located northwest of the Public Works Center on West Second Street. Merchandise to be auctioned will be available for viewing on Friday, September 9th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And then again, prior to the auction, Saturday morning, from 8:00 to 9:00. And then we also, we'll have the list of auction items available on our website once this list is presented to you and approved, and we can move forward with that. And then we'll be adding as needed. The Joplin Health Department is now offering CPR classes for the community, and they offer friends and family, Heart Saver, and the Heart Code Basic Life Support Classes. Two classes are taught each month, and they rotate through the three classes. More information can be found on the city's website. It's actually on the Parks and Recreation website on the online catalog under Adults Programs at joplinparks.org. That's the way they can sign up. Citizens can, of course, always call the Health Department as well, 623-6122, extension 1256. In recognition of Labor Day holiday, the city of Joplin offices will be closed on Monday, September 5th. Excuse me. The Joplin City Council meeting, as you know, will be moved to Tuesday, September 6th. Residential trash does not run on Labor Day, so that service will, people that have service on Monday will move to Tuesday, and then the rest of the service days move forward using Saturday as the Friday trash pickup. And always, if citizens have any questions, they can contact me in the Public Information Office or visit the city's website or Facebook page. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel? Yes, Mr. Cortez? Oh, you waved at me.
Thank you.
I remember Ms. Emmert was my school crossing guard going to Irving School when I was a kid.
That's a nice memory.
She's a good memory, and I'm sure she wasn't making any more money than they can make today, but it was a service to the children. I have good memories of that lady, so, and it's a while ago.
Yep, they're good people.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.